It's now 5:30. I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time. Bryce, please come forward and open us up in prayer.
Dear Lord, thank you so much for this day. Thank you so much for allowing us to gather here. Thank you for giving up in this city, these council members. Please guide them and give them wisdom as they enact our code here in our city. Lord, thank you so much for our police and our fire that help and serve all the people of this city. Lord, thank you so much for your son and his name. His name, I pray.
Ms. Davis, would you please verify the role? Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting? The motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay, is there a motion to approve the prepared agenda? Motion, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Okay, next on the agenda is citizens' comments. These comments should be no longer than three minutes in length and must pertain to city business. And there will be no comments from the council. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council? Yes, sir. Please come forward. Take a seat and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Mark Greenwood. My address is 600 Miller Creek Road. I'm just outside of the city limits, but I do all my shopping, everything inside the city limits. So, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, Chief John Scarborough, and fellow citizens of Batesville, I want to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak about the good article that was written in White River Now by Andrea Bruner titled, "City Pauses Decision to Team with ICE." I draw my thoughts and inspiration from the famous book by Frederick Bastiat in his essay, "The Law," written 170 years ago. Bastiat reminds us that the true purpose of law is simple and noble, to protect every individual, God's given right to life, liberty, and property. Law should act as our collective shield against injustice, substituting organized force for individual self-defense. It must prevent plunder, the unlawful taking of what belongs to others, whether through theft, violence, or fraud. When criminals, regardless of their origin, commit these acts in our town, they engage in what Bastiat calls illegal plunder. Bastiat warns that when law fails to punish wrongdoing, it invites more chaos as victims lose faith and society fractures. I imagine, at Batesville, where families feel safe, businesses thrive without fear of crime, and all residents, native or immigrant, respect the rules that bind us. Because I do not fully trust any three-letter federal agencies, I encourage a cautious cooperation with ICE on criminal arrests. Either with or without ICE, we need to target only those that break the law, not the hard-working immigrants. It ensures that our local resources focus on protection, not division. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Yes, sir.
I'm Joshua Foss. I live at 25 Rosewood Road, Batesville, Arkansas. And I would like to address the council. I thank you for this opportunity to address the council and the mayor. And I would also like to speak about the previous mention of the article with pausing ICE with our local police. Perhaps I come with a different perspective. I don't currently, but several years ago, I was part of a Hispanic mission here in Batesville that helped out with Hispanics. And I know several that in that time tried to do things legally with the green cards, the visas, and all that. I do know that certain Central America countries and South American countries have very differences on the process of getting your green cards and for what purpose. I support immigration reform. I believe we need it. We don't hear much talked about it. But there is, it's not a cut-and-dry process across the board, and it needs to be. However, I also I have friends. I have friends. I have neighbors that own local businesses here that are Hispanic. And from the article, from what I read, this is the concern from different people that called, you know, the mayor's office, concerned that they're gonna, our local law enforcement is gonna haul people out of their houses or go down to the the plants and raid them and different stuff like that. I have friends who work here. They are citizens. I have a neighbor who actually had to go back to Mexico for a certain amount of time to come back here and go through, and he is now a citizen of the United States. They are friends, and I respect them highly. And so sometimes we get targeted to have a different approach to this immigration as being racist, or we just want rid of all immigrants or all Hispanics. That is not the case. However, I believe we do not need to tie the hands of our local law enforcement to deal with criminals. It is a crime to be here illegally, for one. But beyond that, violent crimes, when they have access, they can have access to lists of violent crimes of people that have done crimes, and they stop somebody, and they can see that. I'm all about giving them what they need to do their job efficiently and successfully. And so that's why I would encourage you all to reverse the decision to pause that, the ICE with our PD, and change that, allow them to do their jobs the way they need to do their jobs, and use every tool available at their disposal to do that. And so with that, I go back.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Anyone else in the like to address the council? Yes, sir.
It's good to see you all again. It's been a while. Hope everybody's doing well. It's a good year. It's a new year. New election season coming up. Everybody's busy. I'm gonna speak to the same thing. Brian Norris, 109 Big Pine Road. Speaking on the topic, I come from a little bit different point of view on it. As you all know, I was military, served all over the world. One of the largest things that we focused on in our last seven years was human trafficking. Illegal immigration is modern-day slavery. Modern-day slavery. They are abused. Customs and Border Patrol reported that just last year, or fiscal year 2023, so two years ago, 137,000 incidences of child sex trafficking took place in the United States alone. The current Customs and Border Patrol, Tom Homan, estimates that number to be near 300,000 with kids they still cannot find. And those are just minors. That's not counting the adults that are prostituted throughout the United States and globally due to the massive amount of illegal immigration that's taken place. DNI Tulsi Gabbard has named this as the most significant, critical inflection point and compromise of our national integrity and security ever, with more than 20 million to 40 million people coming across this border, many of them unknown, but known to be terrorists or terrorist sympathizers with training. This is a fact. Employers use this to their benefit. They pay them substandard wages to capitalize profits on their efforts. Think about that. They pay them substandard wages to capitalize on their labor. And we turn the blind eye, as a nation, for far too long as we allow modern-day slavery, because that's what it is. When you take someone's labor and their time and you do not compensate them adequately for it, you are enslaving that person in perpetuity. They are at risk of deportation. They are in fear of being separated from their families. And employers use that to their advantage to press them into indentured servitude in this nation, knowing that they have nowhere else to go. Now, through the one big beautiful bill, the current administration has offered up to $14 billion total for this effort, of which city police officers who, in cities that partner with them, are offered $65,000 plus 30 benefits equalling $84,500 base plus overtime for training. 100% reimbursement of all training is done. And now, as someone who has been forced to cross overseas to implement our nation's will, I can tell you one thing, you can't get enough of an extra training. No matter who's giving you the training, no matter where it's coming from, if it's free and provided for, and you're given the equipment, you take advantage of it. It's gonna make our city safer. It's gonna make our community safer. It's gonna do nothing but enhance the quality of the policing that we have in this city. And to turn down that free asset to the citizens of this city is neglect in your duties and performance to ensure the safety of all of those which you represent. Because if you walk away from this without allowing them to have that, you are thereby denying them the ability to be more effective in their policing with the resources, training, and equipment needed to do so. As of November 10th through 2025, ICE has implemented this across 40 states, 8,000 to 10,000 trained officers, and climbing with 2,000 plus in training right now. I see no reason why we would not want our police officers further engaged and trained and equipped to enact our laws that you press upon them to enforce upon the citizenry. The better trained they are, the more able they are to deal with it, and the safer we all are. I encourage you to reconsider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council? If not, we will move on to the next. Yes, ma'am. Time for one more. Please come forward. Sorry.
I'm Jacqueline Hennifin. I live at 2010 Clearwater Trace in Batesville. And one thing, they have given these illegals a way to go. They're paying them to go back and then come back the right way. You know, so they have plenty of opportunity to do this. So I don't see what's wrong with criminals, that we take care of that and send them back. Because I was shocked at this article that you weren't taking advantage of this because I think if you took a poll, people want this. You know, so and then the training part of the police officers, you know, that's all free, you know. And if you get that, they could be trained on this. Because we do have a problem with illegal immigrants, and we like to get it corrected. And thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You can come forward. If you need to speak to us from right there, that'd be fine, ma'am. You don't have to come forward. Just right there would be fine. Okay.
I'm slow and everything. I'm 80, but I still live in church.
Take your time.
And I'm in a beautiful little town in our wonderful state of Arkansas. I've always lived in Arkansas, but I swapped down on that party thing like I was at church. I have a thing because I can't memorize stuff. I've had a major stroke. And I guess I'll bull y'all. Because I thought I was supposed to say, "Good evening, and my name is Patsy Smotherman, and I live on Hill Street in that hood apartment complex close to a little magnet school. And somebody y'all know and love, and I, we love, Mr. Fred Frye, who's a patrol, not a patrolman anymore, he's a detective now. He lives one driveway over from us, so we feel pretty safe there. And anyway, I love our country. I love our Lord. And I don't dislike or hate anyone because the Bible says we're all of one blood. And but the people that come here wanting to harm other people, especially children, and like the one young man said, women and children, we don't really need them here in this beautiful little town. And I love Batesville. I've only lived here 11 years. I've lived in several other cities in Saracen, Batesville, I mean Bradford. And when I had the struggle coming into here because of my daughter and her husband. Anyway, they've come from all over the world, our southern border. We don't even know what diseases even they can have. And y'all already know all about the drugs and everything with them and all and all that. But there are diseases that have been not known in America for years that are in other parts of the world that they could bring here. And we know they hurt people, like you said a while ago, little children. And I don't believe that, I mean, even if you're not a Republican and want to help our president, we are Americans. We're Kansans. We love where we live. And we want to be safe. There are a lot of little children that walk by my house because of the law school. And so I would ask y'all to please let ICE help. That's all I know what to say. I'm just kind of dumb. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much for your comments.
And you are. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know you were helping them. See if I could get it up because that's what I do at church. I probably shouldn't touch this table once I pass. Thank you. That's very much so. And that's just our job, not for shit, all of them.
Thank you so much. Okay, next on the agenda is a police department report.
How are you? Doing good. I'm truly humbled by the time. I appreciate that very much. All of our folks that work at the police department deserve that same. They all do a very hard and strenuous job sometimes without not getting any favors that people very deserve. Onto the report. I believe Chief Favreau emailed you guys the report. The only thing that's up, most everything is down, but calls or service have almost doubled, or more than doubled, in warnings that were written, just a little bit more. I would like to touch on something that Mr. Norris brought up as far as the training goes. This past month, we've had 449 and a half hours of training. All of our officers and reserve officers come together for pistol and rifle fundamentals and breaching techniques and things of that nature. I do appreciate the time and work from Mr. Norris. We've had 20 FOIA requests, information requests in the month of October, which brings us to a total of 46, which we started getting back in July. John wanted me to make sure that, to tell you guys, that PD app for the phones is up and running at this time, available on Android and Apple. And to get to that, it's Batesville space, pd space, AR. Or you can get on the website, there's a button, and you can get that. But other than that, I think that's all.
Explain that app. What is this app supposed to do?
It pretty much mirrors our website.
Oh, it does? Okay.
That's all right. Officer Rowe could better explain that to you if you'd like.
Okay.
Mayor, Councilman. The new website that we launched, we also got a contract agreement with the same company to provide us with an application that can be used on smartphones and tablets. That just recently launched. We had some difficulty with the Apple Store. But in addition to giving people another way to access that, the key distinction between those two things is we have various pieces of information like press releases, messages from the chief. We add registered sex offenders to the map that's available on the website. When people download the application for their phone, we can actually push notifications when we update information. So just assist us in getting the word out to the public whenever something significant happens.
Very good. Appreciate that. Appreciate you guys. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is Fire Chief Mark McCullum with his monthly report. Did I skip anything? These things all. Yes, I did.
How are y'all doing?
Good, chief.
I added a "pi" on the back of this. It kind of breaks it, everything down into each kind of run, just kind of lets y'all know what that extra pi graph is on the back there. We had 50 total calls in October. Had a structure fire, two grass fires, vehicle fire, five medical assists. We had 14 wrecks that we worked in October. 10 false alarms, 10 good-intent calls, 93 inspections, 200 training hours, had one hazmat run, five gas leaks. Of course, they're drilling now, so we run a lot of those. Did some plan reviews. We tested 15,000 running put of fire hose. We pressure tested up to a certain pressure. And we protested 300 hydrants. So that's about what we did.
Okay, anyone have any questions for the chief? Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Mr. Damon Johnson, I skipped over you once, but
Probably got lucky.
No, I was reminded, Councilman Roberts, that I skipped over you, so.
Okay, well, the first thing I guess I need to bring up is to ask permission for a street department employee who Mr. Johnny Coles is trying to pass the baton for responsibility of traffic light programming, maintenance, that kind of stuff. And so part of that duty is, is that 2:00 in the morning, when a drunk driver hits a traffic light or a thunderstorm happens, you know, lightning strikes or whatever, traffic light issue, or whenever it happens on Sunday morning or noon when they're at work. But Billy will be the primary responder. And so we wanted to ask permission for him to take a company truck home. Right now, he's not taking a company truck home. He drives his personal truck in. And it would save probably about 30 minutes of response time if he's able to just drive straight to a traffic light. And I mean, this probably happens some years are worse than others, but you know, six to 10 times a year is probably, you know. It's happened a little more frequently of late with the new traffic signal stuff at St. Louis and Harrison, working the gremlins out of that new stuff, new equipment. There's always some wire that's touching another wire, or something that takes forever to figure out that they have trouble with. So I mean, it's not something that happens a lot, but it sure would be helpful if he could just drive a city truck home, and then he can just drive it straight to the whatever intersection's having trouble instead of having to go over the shop. A lot of times what he does, he drives to the scene in his personal truck, assesses what he needs, and then he goes to the shop and gets parts and tools and stuff. And he will just have all that stuff on it. It's just on his truck if he's able to take a personal truck or a work truck home, so.
And Billy's one of our crew leaders as well.
Yeah, he's a crew leader. He's probably, you know, what I would say, you know, Johnny's right-hand guy on the street department. He's worked for the city for over 15 years. He's a good conscientious.
Yeah.
I do.
Motion that we have to take.
Motion to second, Mr. Roberts.
All right. Thank you, guys. Now, just to kind of give you a report.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We do need to vote on that. Have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Seconded, five, saying aye? Pose like sign.
All right. Thank you, guys. I guess just to kind of give you a rundown on what we've been working on lately. Last two weeks, we've been deep in the budget. The mayor and Jessica and I have been working on it diligently, hoping to have something to y'all in December. Not making any promises. I made a speech to our department heads last week. This is probably the most difficult budget I've ever worked in 18 years. Expenses, just operation oil expenses have gone up, and our revenues are pretty flat. Maybe slight increase, but not at the level of costs. And I'm just talking about like electric bills and insurance and like just costs that you have no control over. We're seeing the numbers are significantly different than they have been in the past. So, you know, it's tough right now. So I just want you guys to know and understand, like, we're not dragging our feet. We're trying hard. But I'm not sure when we're gonna get it all figured out. Hopefully soon. Hopefully by the end of the month, anyway. We'll have something to present. As far as you know, projects, we've got the parks project, which hopefully you've driven through there some. You can see the event center is really coming together. You're starting to start to see shape. The sports courts are starting to be, you know, formed up. The skateboarding and all-wheel park is starting to take shape. So we're seeing lots of positive things in the park there. Of course, there's still a lot of dirt stockpiled that will be put in place over the next year. If you notice, there's a large crane moved in down there next to the intake. The subcontractor that's gonna start on the intake work, we should be seeing, they're gonna be hauling sheet pile and quite a bit of heavy equipment over the next few weeks. Been promising that for probably a month, but they're finally doing it now. So we'll see work start happening there. That'll be a pretty significant amount of work. The water plant itself, you can see if you drive and look, you know, from Channing Drive, a lot of concrete and steel coming out of the ground, some very significant structures. We're making good progress there. Probably two months ago, they were reporting they were about three weeks behind with the work schedule. And we're already seeing some improvements there. On Thursday last week, we had a meeting and we looked at the schedule again. Now they're saying they're about two weeks behind, but they changed some of their work progress around. And they think about three months from now, they're gonna do a lot of work at the same time that's gonna gain them a month or so. So they feel like they're gonna make up that schedule and actually be ahead of schedule three, four months from now. So that's positive, you know. It's easy to not pay attention to the work schedule on a project of that size. You know, it's gonna take three years, but it's imperative that we kind of stay on track. And scheduling is important because time is money. And so we don't want them to run over, spend a lot of extra time. It costs, it will cost everybody money, including, you know, the city. So we work hard to keep them on schedule and be sure the quality of work stays high the whole time. So far, we're happy with the progress on both projects. Both contractors are conscientious. They're working hard, and they're trying to do the best that they can for the city. So we appreciate that. The other kind of much smaller project than those, but super rehab project that, you know, I've brought up a time or two. We do have numbers from In situ Farm, who's the company who's gonna be the primary contractor to do that work. We're reviewing that information. We're not really ready. I think by the first meeting in December, we will bring that to you guys for approval. for approval to move forward. We're working with In situ Farm. We're a member of something called the Buy Board, which is kind of a pre-bid situation. In situ Farm is a brand name of some trenchless technology that is the primary work in this project. And they kind of invented it, they're the best at it, and that's why we've chosen to go with them. There are other companies, and in our research, communities haven't always been happy with the product that they've received. And we're probably going to end up spending five or six million dollars, and we want to be sure that we get something that's going to last till we're all dead and gone. And so there we're, you know, hopefully we'll bring that to you guys in December for your approval. And we'll get that, I'm not promising, start from the first of the year and it'll progress through the first half of next year. Another big thing to talk about is we have a meeting scheduled, myself and our consultant, Olson, with ADQ in two weeks. We're going to go down and present. Just a reminder, we've been under a consent administrative order from ADQ since 2008, I believe. I thought that's years right, somewhere in there. That's something that the mayor and I got slapped in the face with very quick after we both trying to figure out what the hell we were doing. And we've been working on that ever since. We've spent, you know, approximately a hundred million dollars on sewer rehab, sewer treatment, improvements in our sewer system. And we are at the point where we feel like we are going to make, we are not feeling like we're going to make the case to them that we have completed all the requirements from their consent administrative order, and we're going to, the intent is to ask for them to remove that from the city of Batesville. We are not having overflows due to hydraulic overloading, and we are not missing any permits at the wastewater treatment plant, and those are the two issues that they have issue with. And of course, if y'all remember, I mean, I know that was almost twenty years ago, but our sewer treatment and collection system was in need of some rehab. And we took that serious and we done it. And I believe that they will release this, will come, that consent administrative order. And of course, the mayor's welcome to go with us if he'd like to.
What day is that?
I think it's the nineteenth of November.
I've been there on the office on the other end of that conversation, so I would love to see the celebration of us getting off that.
And I don't know if they'll make the decision in that meeting, but
Yeah, right.
We certainly are going to, hopefully they will. And then kind of lastly, just an update on the street department. They are trying to, they've been doing a push the last few weeks, doing some painting. It's about to get too cold and wet to paint, so of course, we've, like all things, we waited to the last minute, try to get some in before the year's out, before the, you know, striking can be, you know, done. And so they're working on that. They've got several drainage issues that they're working on around town. And they've also been, we're going to do some more work up there, but they've been in the Riverwood Development repairing some drainage structures that just quite frankly weren't built to a good standard, even though they're brand new almost, I mean, by street drainage standards. But they're up there having to make some repairs. But, you know, after that neighborhood is built, we pass new standards. And so, you know, we shouldn't see that in the future with, if any, when new developments occur. So. Riverwood, it is off Gap Road. Yeah, it's up there, you know, the gymnastics place is on Harrison Street at the front of it. Otherwise, that's pretty much all I have to report unless y'all have any questions for me.
Thank you, Damon.
All right, thank y'all.
Okay, next on the agenda is Ms. Crystal Johnson and Mr. Chris Hill with A&amp;P and Economic Development Update. Welcome, guys.
Thank you for the introduction. So we have two things on our agenda that we would like to do. One is give a quick economic development report. And then we'll kind of start with the not-so-fun things, and then we'll let Chris end with. Let you know that there are three, what we've identified are three major challenges that pose a threat to our local economy. So the first of those things is housing and the housing shortage that we are experiencing. The second is workforce and connecting our emerging workforce to opportunities. Not doing that well, so that's the second thing. The third thing is retail attraction. So if we could, I'm going to kind of hit on each one of those topics and then let you know what the approach is to helping solve some of our issues. So what you have in your packet is a summary document, and then you have a three-page housing handout. So just to let you know kind of what's in your, what's in your packet. But first to talk about housing, we talked about this last time, and I'm going to keep talking about it until we are no longer in a housing crisis. But what this, what our housing research tells us is that the good news is that our job market is strong. The good news is that our population projections are still projected to increase. So those are good things. But the bad part about this story is that we are, the majority of us in our community are severely housing cost burdened, which means that a lot of us cannot afford the housing that we do have, if we can afford housing at all. And that is reflected in our data where forty-four percent, we talked about this last time, forty-four percent of our workforce is migrating in, not from just out of the city limits of Batesville, but migrating in from outside of our county. So that poses a threat. If another community invested in good jobs like we have and they had housing, what could that look like for the seventy-two people, seventy-two hundred people who are driving in for work every day? They may have other options. That poses a threat to us. So the good news is that people want to live here, thanks to all of the work that you all have been doing in the past since I've been around almost twenty years. Our quality of life is good, the survey responses that we got from people were very positive. People want to live here. Our workforce just simply cannot, a good majority of our workforce simply cannot afford to live here. So, you know, kind of what can we do outside of the Chamber and City Economic Development, investing in large-scale housing developments? We can use our research. You know, we invested in about fifty thousand dollars in housing research. So we have that. We can all use it. And I encourage you to use it when you're talking to just your constituents, just landowners or potential developers. I love our local developers and thankful for every little bit of investment that they make. Gets us one step closer to our goal, which is about a thousand rental units and about a thousand homes is what really the gap is in our market. So I've also included in your packet a letter that we were able to write to the state to not necessarily support one development project in their attempt to secure tax credits, but rather to, we wrote a letter just addressing our need and tried to appeal to them while they were issuing tax credits to use the data that we have to make their decisions instead of making subjective decisions about who in the state gets tax credits. So we were able to kind of push back a little bit at the state level. And the last that I heard, those developers did receive their tax credits. And, you know, right now, it's sometimes in building a large housing division, you need every bit of tax credits, every bit of financing advantages you can take. It takes a lot to pull off a large-scale development right now with the cost of land, interest rates and all the things. So that's kind of what you all can do as far as helping us move the housing needle. Just talk about it, and it's okay to say, hey, we have a housing crisis. Like, I mean, this is not unique to us. This is happening across the state. I have been participating as much as I can in conversations and do feel like we are ahead of the game because we do have data. We're not just giving anecdotal responses when we get inquiries or from we're trying to attract. So that's kind of housing in a box. Any questions about specific to housing? If not, we will kind of segue into our second talking point, which is a challenge, which is workforce development. And, you know, when you take a step back and you try to start solving problems for why are health outcomes not improving, why are education outcomes not improving? Why do we continue to have this cycle of poverty? Why is our median household income not going up? You know, that's a big puzzle. It's a lot of, lots of systems and, you know, lots of people in those systems. So we kind of took a step back and said, we've got to, what we're going to do is we're going to focus on what's happening to our residents in our community from the age of zero to twenty-four. And we're evaluating every step of that kind of lifespan and identifying where the gaps are. So, for example, early childhood is obviously one big bucket. So we were experiencing delays in finding childcare, available childcare spots, affordable childcare spots, and early childhood, really just all the issues around that. So we now have some contracts with the Arkansas Department of Ed. We've got teams in place to really focus on that zero-to-four-year-old age group, making sure we have available spots for those spots, and making sure our most vulnerable kids have childcare. That's kind of being taken care of. Then on the other end of that spectrum, you have eighteen- to twenty-four-year-olds, our emerging workforce, who are year after year not necessarily being afforded the opportunity to have a family sustaining wage, which in our community, that's eighteen dollars and twenty-five cents. That's how much you need per hour to take care of one person. If you add a dependent or you add a child or children to that equation, the number changes. But for one single person, they need eighteen dollars and twenty-five cents to live. And that is just affording them their basics, their housing, their food, their healthcare, and having a little bit extra disposable income for living. So that's a living wage. The problem that we're having is a good majority of our kids are not being shown a path to making that family supporting wage. So therefore, it's just our cycle of poverty just continues and continues and continues until we say, where's the gap? Where is it broken in the system and how do we fix that? It's a, that is a long, hard question to answer, and it takes every single one of us in this community to come together to, first of all, acknowledge that we have a problem and to come together to figure out how to solve it. So over the summer, we had an education summit with about a hundred educators, administrators, business representatives to start talking about the problem. So we will continue to chip away at that and find gaps and repair our system. So that's going to be, foot on the gas pedal, we'll not let up with that. It's pretty crucial. Then the third piece is in retail recruitment. So like Damon said, I have to hear this a lot about budgeting and just the future of our community as far as tax revenue goes and where the economic development program even fits into that equation. But we know from our data that we have large gaps in retail, meaning that people are, our citizens of Batesville are spending money on products and services. If we don't have that product or service, they're not spending their money here. They're spending that wherever they're spending it. So really trying to shore up and be sure that we don't have big gaps in our retail as far as fast casual dining or that we don't have gaps in retail as far as sporting goods. You know, a couple of years ago, we recruited Aldi, which was a huge gap in our grocery. People were going out of our community to specialty grocery. But I'll say, it's been a slow year for retail. You've got in your packets all of the touchpoints where we've contacted hundreds of retailers based on our gap report. There is a gap. We made a list and we went and called every single one. So they're aware of our community, that the hard reality that we are facing is that we have limited sites. All of our large retail want to be on St. Louis or Harrison. So again, kind of what can you all do to help is you can talk to property, your friends that own properties on St. Louis and Harrison. If they're not listed, get them listed or at least let me know that they would be willing to sell them. That's one thing that you can do. That's what we've been working on, is identifying higher and better use. So if there's a business on St. Louis or Harrison, it really could be anywhere, like the pawn shop, for example, where Seven Brew is now. Now that, for a concept, I don't have to be on St. Louis or Harrison. People are going to come to the pawn shop no matter where I am, so I'll be happy to relocate. And that was an example of a project that worked really well. Or just out of, we have very few commercial sites. So eventually, if they've expanded to every other community in Arkansas, eventually they'll have to come into some tertiary markets. So we will be ready when they, when interest rates come back down, we will be ready. But they're aware, as you can tell in your packet, they're aware of our community. Maybe in twenty-six, we'll be able to plan a deal. So those are our three big buckets, things that are keeping me up at night. Any questions about economic development? I would love for, I would love to get you all engaged with our WorkFire work. We've really just been laying the foundation, building some infrastructure. You know, it's really easy for me to say, hey, school districts, y'all are doing a terrible job. You're not giving our kids opportunities for JAG internships. I think last year, we had seventeen kids countywide taking advantage of any kind of job exposure opportunity, and we just have, we have to do better than that. But it's really easy for me to say, hey, you guys aren't doing a good job, but then not coming to the table with any solutions. So I'd love for us to, as WorkFire kind of builds up and picks up, I'd love for you all to get engaged at some point.
Crystal, I have a question for you regarding the three areas, and thanks for spelling that out. I know we have to walk at you dumb at the same time, but is there any particular sequential order that communities have seen that have faced similar issues? Any sequential order to the focus? I know you're going to have to hit all of them, but for example, do you have to focus first primarily on living wage, because if they don't have the living wage, they, you can't attract the people that are going to come in and build the houses? Is there any right order there?
I think that's a really hard question, but no, I think it's all. I mean, I think we have to do all of the things at the same time as hard and as fast as we can do them. It would sure be easier that way. This is really not the case. And we have to kind of do a full press in all, in all areas.
In regards to housing, are there any implications that nightly or short-term rentals, such as the REVO interfere with normal monthly rental for a family?
It's a good question.
I would think just because of A&amp;D collections, and the first kind of being really small for your menus inside the city, I'm not sure about outside.
Personal apps? I'm missing a couple. How do we create eighteen dollars to forty-five cent higher wages?
So we have those, we have those jobs in our community.
We do?
There are, there are jobs that pay eighteen dollars and twenty-five cents and more. But where we're having trouble is getting our emerging workforce, our eighteen-year-old to twenty-four. our eighteen-year-olds to twenty-four-year-olds on a track to, to be able to get those jobs. So right now, a lot of times Fred, what happens is a kid might graduate from high school, but the only, the only thing that they know is what their parents do for work. So they say, oh, I can be a nurse or I can do construction like my dad. I have no idea what else is out there for me. But we know, Chris and I know, I mean, y'all know where, um, well, you will know because we're developing infrastructure. We've got it, we've got some information coming where we've mapped, um, every business in Independence County in relation to the school district. And I can, like I said, we could dig into all this stuff, but if you are a student at Concord and you say, hey, I'd love to have a, a internship or I'd love to have a job after school, but I can only go where I can ride my bike or I can only go where my mom can drop me off or I can only go where I can walk. Now we have a map of every employer within whatever radius you want to draw, which is helpful, one, but two, it also tells us how many employees they have, what, like back to Fred's question, what is their, um, starting wages? Like, is that even a place where we want to send our kids for job experience? If the most they can ever make there is thirteen dollars, maybe not. But there are opportunities, I think where we can add value is, you know, our, our school admin teams, they're, they're tapped out. I mean, they, we asked a lot of them, um, they work really hard. They do the best job that they can, but I think adding like another layer of support to say, hey, we're here too. We could also care and we can help you at least with the data side, um, I think will be helpful. We'll try it. Okay, any more economic development stuff? If not, we'll turn it over to Chris. He's got the really fun.
I've got the fun stuff.
The fun side.
All right, so let's talk about tourism. So the first thing I want to talk to you about is our Experience Builder app. If you have not already downloaded this, I encourage you to scan that QR code. It's going to take you to, um, a page where you can download our app. This app is, this year has been used by eighteen thousand. They're using this app not just to find local restaurants and places to stay and places to shop, but they're also looking at different experiences. We can send them on challenges to go check out the twelve different places to get great desserts. And if they complete that challenge, we'll give them a prize. It's a great resource, um, super great for locals too. There's going to be things on there that maybe you haven't ever been to or maybe you've never thought of. We have trails on there that you can find where you can sort whether you want to ride your bike there or hike there or do whatever. It is a really great resource for our community and we encourage you all to download that. AMP is also, we just wrapped up our fall campaign at the end of October and our Christmas campaign is currently running. Next time we tell you all, when you're here, we can tell you all of the amazing stats that go along with that right now. It's still information gathering stuff and obviously Christmas visitors haven't been here yet. So ads are rolling right now. So this is information gathered from our advertising technology partner, Datify. And Datify looks at online behaviors of people. And typically it's looking at how people behave that actually visit Batesville. And so what we're looking at here on this slide, this is information about people who live more than fifty miles away from Batesville. So if you live outside of fifty miles, we consider you a visitor. And so what that is, is these are people that just happened upon our website. We did not necessarily put ads in front of them. So that's seventy-four thousand people visited our website. If you follow the graphic, it trickles down, ultimately a hundred and forty-five of those people stayed overnight in Batesville, contributed to AMP. Average daily spend for those visitors is a hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. And so the economic impact of people just looking at our website is about three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, which is great news. And that is just the economic impact of spending money in the community at local businesses. And then overall, for the first three quarters of the year, um, one point six million trips have been made to Batesville. That is not people, those are trips. And so that is, if you have multiple weekends to visit Batesville, you are getting time multiple times. About eleven and a half percent of those people spend the night. You can kind of see the trend, probably no surprises that summers tend to be a little bit higher than the first quarter there. We're looking forward to see how the fourth quarter does. This is the lodging tax collection. This is money that is paid by hotels for the three percent lodging tax that is levied at hotels. So top right graph there kind of shows you, um, last number of years. Twenty-twenty-five is at the bottom there. We are seven and a half percent ahead of where we were, um, this time last year and about twenty percent ahead of the last five years. If we're being honest, we only look at the last five years. So it's twenty-twenty isn't worth looking at and anything before was, might as well have been a hundred percent ago. So really we're just looking at those last five years. We are ahead of where we typically are. And fourth quarter, as you can see, tends to be pretty good. So we are hopeful that trend also continues.
And then, so Julie or Landon could, either one tell you this, but so the, the tax collections that we receive go to fund the program. And we are, there's only so, so far that we can grow this, this fund because we only have so many hotel rooms. So until we add another hotel to our equation, I mean, we're, a few things could change the tax collection, like the average daily rate, but there's only so much we can do to continue to grow the fund because we only have so much capacity.
Do you think food, Airbnb, that's real?
These are all only hotels and Airbnbs within the city limits of Batesville.
So my final slide, um, so far this year, um, so January first to, um, the end of October, visitors have spent about two hundred and twelve million dollars in the city. Again, that is everything from restaurants, lodging, retail, um, any of those things.
Okay, so one thing, I'll put you on the spot. You all will probably be interested to know what we've been trying to kind of gauge. So just to, just to remind everyone, the piece of, um, of the Christmas lights that we have is just marketing. So we take all the work that you guys do, we just package it and market it. But if, so you know, this year we're a little bit displaced. We're having to, y'all are moving, we're moving the location. So we've been a little bit concerned with how is that going to impact this year and with travel? So the statistics that we're trying our best to, to figure it out. But if we compared our promotion, our social media promotion from twenty-four, compared to twenty-five, we have an increase of.
We've more than doubled, um, just our organic reach in that. And so there's a lot that goes into getting people here to see Christmas lights. But if we're looking at just October one to present of both years, we are more than.
I think the number was like a hundred and fifty thousand people in twenty-four and this year so far we've had.
Like three seventy.
Three hundred and seventy and we're not even to Thanksgiving yet. So again, if people don't come, it's not because they're not aware. They know what we've got going on.
Any tourism questions I can ask?
Very quickly, are there, if you had to name three primary drivers for tourism, are those the events?
Events are huge. So events are huge. It's really, it's events, it is, and that can be, um, that can be a basketball tournament happen in the community center. Those tend to be the biggest, um, Scottish festival, um, any.
Race track.
Race track, sorts of things. But also other, other big attractors are of course the Christmas lights. I would consider that a festival also. But then just outdoor adventure, um, and beyond that, really people just coming here to go to a restaurant, go shopping, just quick little day trips.
Any other questions? Thank you, guys. Appreciate the partnerships.
Excellent.
They work hard.
Keep up the good work. Okay, next on the agenda is an executive session. Is there a motion to enter into executive session? Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Order, uh, out of executive session, there was no appointments at this time, but we do have three openings, uh, or two, two to three openings on, uh, the Parks Committee that have to be residents of the city. So if we have anyone interested in that, uh, please contact our Parks Director, Mr. Lowen Lohmert. And let's move on into the two thousand twenty-five financials. If you have any questions or concerns, make sure you give myself or, uh, Ms. Davis a call and I'm going to move into mayor comments, uh, the next meeting. What is the, it's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. What is that date?
Twenty-ten to twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, okay. All right. You would put that on your, what are your dates? That's a Tuesday, the twenty-fifth. Yeah, twenty-fifth.
I will not be here.
It's about three thirty for me to be here.
Okay.
I won't be here either.
How many will not be here?
Yeah, I don't think we're going to be here either.
Okay. All right.
And I've, I've got a doctor's permit in Jonesburg for procedures.
Okay, I'm going to guess we're going to have to, I'm going to need to take Fred in Jonesburg. Guys, I'll look at it and I'll send out some other possible dates. I know we got Thanksgiving, I know that's a busy week. A lot of folks are probably traveling that week and I, but that was our schedule next meeting. What if we moved it up to that Monday? Is that still going to be a challenge for someone? Will not be here?
I will be here Monday.
Okay. Okay, I, I might just send it out, just kind of poll and then I'll try to let, uh, let everybody know, let the press and everybody know if we come up with a date. And like I said, we may not even have any, uh, agenda items for that time, but, uh, we'll, we'll keep everybody informed. All right, the next thing is, uh, Blue Water CAS invoice for eighty-eight hundred dollars from a perpetual fund. I think that is a pump motor, uh, for the community center. I just need approval for that. Have a motion, the second, uh, eighty-eight hundred dollars for that community center perpetual fund. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Propose like, like sign. All right, also I'd like to mention that, uh, the city is going to be a collection site for support of, of food drive today, sponsored by Batesville Help and Hope. Food Bank will be collecting non-perishable food items until Friday, November the twenty-first here at City Hall. So, uh, please, uh, pass it on to all your friends and everything. I know there's some other, uh, drop-off points as well. I think Nava Joe's, uh, Jessica, was there any other ones out there?
It's the, the one that I'm thinking of. We're kind of, we're kind of teaming up with them.
Okay, all right, that'd be good. So here's a list of the items, shelf, uh, shelf stable milk, canned goods, fruit soup, veggies, cereal, rice, pasta, crackers, peanut butter, mac and cheese cups, and canned meats, chicken, ham, turkey, cooking oils and spices. So, uh, if you could, please, uh, just drop them by here at City Hall. Move on to, all right, y'all, one other thing I wanted to mention to you is the, um, uh, you know, I think we had mentioned maybe something to you guys about the cardio equipment at the, uh, community center and I know we have a perpetual fund for that. And, um, if, if, just last week, we had a treadmill down and to repair that treadmill, it's a thirteen thousand dollar treadmill. It's, it cost six thousand dollars to repair. I said, do not repair it. So we're having those issues. What I'd like to do is go ahead, it's a four, at least fourteen days, four, I mean, fourteen weeks, uh, delivery on, uh, equipment. So I would like, uh, to get the support of the council to go ahead and the perpetual fund. We're looking at about a hundred and fifty thousand to replace, uh, all of our cardio equipment.
Bags and ellipticals and everything?
Yes, yes, yeah, no. It will be, uh, I think it will be the treadmills, it'll be the ellipticals, all, all of our cardio equipment. If, if it's not, you know, we have a couple, maybe it's new. Yeah.
Are they about ten years old now?
Uh, they're about seven years old. And if you Google, uh, I just, you know, put a Google in there, said, you know, what's the lifespan of that? Five to seven years, uh, on, on your cardio equipment. Like I said, they get outdated. Your, uh, your software gets outdated because they're all electronic. And, uh, so this would give us a new thing and you know, that's one thing that helps we will keep our membership. We are down a little bit on membership, but hopefully, I know Julie has reported more than once that we've had a machine down and we like to try to keep everything up and fresh and running. So.
I'll make the motion.
Make a motion. Have a motion, second, Ms. Hubbard. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Propose like sign. Okay, uh, tomorrow is Veterans Day and, uh, there will be a celebration at Ryan College at eleven o'clock. So, uh, make sure you, uh, contact a veteran. We have Mr. Fred Krueg, he's a Vietnam vet, so greatly appreciate your service. And I'm going to, I'm sorry. The city is closed tomorrow, sure is, but trash will be picked up tomorrow. Our trash guys will be, uh, be working tomorrow. Liaison reports. Okay, council comments, Ms. Davis?
Ms. Hubbard, none. Mr. Frederick? The simple, none. Ms. Hubbard, none. Mr. Krueg?
None.
Mr. Moody?
None.
Mr. Reeves?
None.
Mr. Roberts?
Okay, there's no other business, is there a motion? I'm sorry. Incentives, one other thing, yes. We had talked about the possibility of employee incentives. I know this time around November and like I've always said, our most valuable asset to our community is our, our citizens. They work extremely hard and, uh, we try to incentive, you know, give them an incentive each, each year. And some years it's been small, some of them we have not been able to, but here in the past we have, and so I feel very fortunate. So, Mr. Krueg?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that would give one thousand dollars to your incentive to full-time employees. Other employees would be probably get by hours' work.
That's a motion. Second, Frederick. Okay, any further discussion?
Yes, yes, there is, and I would like to check this before Black Friday.
Okay, any other, any other comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Thank you, guys, and I'll greatly appreciate that. Okay, now is there a motion to adjourn? Have a motion for adjournment? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Thank you, guys.